Hello, everybody. It's Alan Lowe and we're here at the Flag of the Voice Podcast Studio. This is our candidate forum where we have any candidate that wants to come in and get their word out. The door is open. Come on in and do it. No charge. Today, we have a very special guest. We have a former city councilman that was duly elected, but I guess we can call it resigned due to some reasons that he will get into and let us all know, but he wants to take his seat back. So, how are you doing today, Ray?
Doing fine, Alan. Thanks for having me here today. And give me an opportunity, at least, to tell my story.
Yes.
First thing I want to do is make perfectly clear, the reason I stepped down from the city council was not because I couldn't hack it, or I didn't like it, or I didn't understand it, it was that I had to. I became, I contracted a deadly illness, a fungal pneumonia, which, as a result, I couldn't breathe. I was rushed to the hospital. They put me on a respirator, high-flow oxygen. I was in the hospital for two months. I underwent robotic lung surgery. I was in ICU, and they didn't think that I was going to make it. One of the doctors, the doctor in charge of the ICU unit, came in and sat down with my wife and I, she's a nurse, big help, was there every day, and suggested that I might want to get my personal affairs in order, and that, do I want to sign a DNR? Because in that unit, they do, they incubate you. In the event that you can't breathe, they stick a tube down your throat. And he said 50% of the people don't make it through that. They don't survive. So that's when he asked me. So at that point, or just prior to that, my wife was handling my phone calls from the city manager, from the mayor, from the public. She's working full-time, taking care of me. So, we decided jointly that perhaps I should step down, because frankly, I didn't think I was going to get out of there. And I felt guilty, somewhat guilty, that here I'm laying on my back in a hospital, collecting a salary such as it is, and, you know, kind of put a roadblock on the system on progress, because in a lot of the important issues, it comes down to a 2-2 vote many times. And that would, without a fifth person on the council, they would be deadlocked.
Right.
So, I decided to step down, and I did. I made what my pulmonologist refers to as somewhat of a miraculous recovery. I started working out, light workout with weights. I ride a bicycle. And just recently, I took my motorcycle for a spin, my Harley-Davidson. So, I'm coming, I'm coming back.
Coming back.
Where I was before I went in the hospital. And as a result, I decided, you know, I have a job to finish. And I have promises that I made during that campaign that I want to fulfill, or attempt to fulfill. And I was also encouraged by the fact that, based on the results of the last election, I'll have, I'll blow my own horn here, I won every precinct in the city. And I won every aspect and every facet of the voting, early voting, day of election, mail-in voting, military voting, and overseas vote. So, I think that I was, once again, I was encouraged by that, because I guess, not because I'm such a great politician, or an orator, is, but the fact is, I was on point. I had the message that people wanted to hear, and that showed at the ballot box. So, I'm the same person I was 10, 11 months ago when I was on the council. My ideology, my philosophies, and my message remains the same. So, I'm ready to go back and do what I can for Palm Coast.
Well, first off, let me say, I'm sincerely glad and happy, as I'm sure you are, that the outcome was what we have here, that you made it through. You were on the positive 50% instead of the negative 50% in that hospital ward. So, when you were elected the last time, well, prior to that, actually, when you were a candidate, you did come in to the studio here, and we helped you get your word out, and-
Couple of times.
Yeah, a couple of times. And I hope you continue to do that as we move forward here. The door is always open to you.
Be happy to.
So, tell us a little bit, remind us, I guess, if you will, what your platform was when you were running the last time, and if you've modified it at all as we move forward now.
No, I haven't modified it. My feeling is that we have to put the brakes, or pull the reins in on this, what I call poorly planned and out-of-control development, major developments, which is putting unsustainable strain on our infrastructure, to include water, drinking water, wastewater, roads, air quality, green space. Pretty soon, there won't be any green space in the city of Palm Coast, not of any significance, which contributes to the flooding problem that a lot of people in the P section, the U section, are experiencing, because the water cannot percolate through concrete or blacktop to the aquifer, which also has put places at strain on the water system, the wells. I think that if you, these people, I don't know, they just keep approving these, approving these projects, changing the zoning. Now, I understand that they just approve zoning for 170,000 square-foot shopping center on the southwest corner of Bel Air and Route 100. I mean, my God. I mean, it's right across the street from Tractor Supply, from BJ's, from Wilson's, from the bank, from this, that. I mean, you can't move at that intersection now. It's saturated.
Yeah.
And these people are insane. You know, it's going to get to the point where people are not going to come here. They're going to go to Ormond, or someplace else to go shopping, because it takes me 10 minutes to go from Seminole Woods Parkway, on Route 100, to Bel Air in the afternoon. 10 minutes.
That's what, a mile and a half, maybe?
No, not even. It's probably about three-quarters of a mile. And, I mean, that's ridiculous. And that's bad for business. And it's bad for the air quality. Everybody knows, or anybody that's done any research on the issue, knows that cars that idle produce more air pollution than when they're cruising at 30 or 40 miles an hour. The lights are timed, I don't know who came up with that system, but they're in the need of some serious free training.
Well, I can tell you, the last time I ran, which is the last time I will run, I was at a candidate forum, and former mayor Alvin said, "All the lights are synchronized." So, you must be wrong.
Yeah, well, they're synchronized, right? They're synchronized against each other. Because you cannot have, listen, when I was a police lieutenant in New York, I'm, as you know, I'm retired police lieutenant, and as administrative lieutenant, part of my responsibilities was traffic facilitation, problem intersection assessment, things of that nature. And I can tell you this, that these lights are not in sync, because when you cannot have trip, a light that's on trip-
Right.
As opposed to the lights that are on time.
Right.
Because you're supposed to be able to, in theory, go from one light to the other light to the other light, traveling at the limit, without having to stop. So, when you're coming from 95 and Route 100, and the light turns green, and the light is green at Seminole Woods, and you're cruising along, somebody comes out of the hospital, boom, light turns red.
Right.
When that turns red, throws the, the light at Seminole, it stays green while you're stopped, and then when you start to go, it turns red.
Yeah.
So, it's got to be looked at, it's got to be done over. You see, the grids, it's not a grid system here. The system, the highway system, was not designed for mass development. It was designed primarily for aesthetics, you know, palm trees, and medians, and all of this. There's really only one, two east-west connectors, and that's Route 100 and Palm Coast Parkway.
Right.
Really only one north-south connector, that's Bel Air. You can't count Route 1, because that's an outlier. And 95 is a limited access highway. So, or if you want to count Old King's Road, which is a two-lane road, it doesn't suffice. So, it wasn't set up for the type of expansion and growing that's taking place. And it's going to continue. They got 12,000 units in the hopper, some already under construction. It breaks my heart. I drive down Seminole Woods Parkway, because I live off of Seminole Woods, and down just before Slipper, the S-section, if you look off to the right, there's got to be 70 to 100 acres there, clear cut.
Yeah.
There isn't a twig standing. And, you know, that's not good for the environment, for air quality, et cetera, et cetera. It's just way, way too much, too fast. And whatever could be done, I'm going to do. I'm committed to that. And they tell me, "Oh, you can't vote no, because it's already approved."
Oh, yeah?
Watch me. I'll vote no. Because somebody's got to make, at least they got to make a statement, all right, and not go along to get along.
Right. But one of the interesting things, and let me ask you about this, you know, well, I'm not anti-development, I'm anti-out-of-control development. And I think that's where we stand.
Me too.
I'm also really concerned about the rezoning. If I come in and I buy 100-acre tract of land that's zoned for commercial, or zoned for residential, I can't just say, "Okay, I bought this, and now I want to go to the city council and have the zoning reversed into, you know, either residential or commercial, whatever way I'm trying to go," just because that's what I want, because I bought the property, and I discovered I could make more money if I changed the zoning, or do whatever. I don't think that's, that wasn't in the original plan, and that's what's throwing a lot of our infrastructure and our design off, if you ask me.
Absolutely. And I talked about that last time. It's called upzoning. And it was and is common practice here. As you said, if I go out and buy five acres zoned, single-family residential, I buy it for X amount of dollars, get it relatively cheap. Developers like to do multifamily, they like to do large developments. And then I buy it, and then I see the right people, make the right connections. Next thing you know, I have it upzoned to multifamily at a much higher density, and I triple my money.
Right.
So, that's part of the problem.
And you're tripling your money at the expense of the community.
That's right.
Yeah.
You know, and people think that, oh, boy, we're getting building, now we're going to get more taxes. But with more building, more housing, more population, you need more services, you need more police protection, you need more fire protection, you need more schools. So, you go up one step, and you come down a step.
It's a complete myth that increasing our housing and population will decrease the need for the, or the amount of property taxes and so forth, because we have more people, so we're making more money. It doesn't work that way. As you just said, the more people you have, the more services that are required. It's never a break. If that were true, we would be in the green right now, as a city, instead of in the red.
Yes. And that's why I think that we, as a city council, when I was on the city council, has to take a step back. Let's take another look at this. If we build, I remember when I was, one of the last meetings on the city council, they wanted to, as you know, the state has mandated that we either refurbish, add-on to, or rebuild water treatment plant one, because it's at capacity. And so, they wanted to, I had a meeting, they always have a pre-meeting before you go to the city council the day before. And they were encouraging me to, or trying to put in a good light, put this development in a good light, 600 units. I forget exactly where it was. And I asked, and I said to the city manager, I said, "Where is this going to dump into? What wastewater plant?" Wastewater 1. I said, "Isn't that already at capacity?" And I said, you know, it gets to the point where, and then it's not, it's just not, the volume, it's also the fact that there's leaks in the system, et cetera, that on a heavy rainstorm, they tell you, "Don't flush your toilet."
Right.
You know, avoid taking a shower. So, I told them, I said, "Expect a no vote from me on this." I said, "I'm not going to vote for 600 units to dump into a water treatment plant that's at capacity. It's crazy. It's insane." So, got to take a step back.
And now, the city's being sued, because in Town Center, there's a developer that says that the city can't provide the water, or the wastewater treatment-
Yeah.
For the development that the city approved. So, now the city's getting sued for it. And I remember when I was running for mayor, and I have, don't remember who it was, Manfree, when she was there, she was saying that she had two commercial companies that wanted to come in, but they backed out, because they couldn't be assured of wastewater treatment and potable water, so, in that same zone. So, we do have a major problem, and it, we have to, as you just said, in my opinion, take a break, stand back, and slow the train so that we can catch up.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that building is, what is it, the promenade, as far as I'm concerned, is a monstrosity. I mean, it goes for two or three city blocks. It looks a little like Sing Sing. If you've been to Sing Sing Prison, I don't mean to do time, I mean, on a tour, if you go by. I know you didn't go to music school there. But it's atrocious. And they said, "Oh, this is upscale, this is upscale, you know, this is high-end housing." I said, "Well, they have to go to the bathroom, too, don't they? So, where's it going to go?"
Yeah.
I don't care if it's high-end or affordable housing. We have to put it in perspective. What can we, what can we build that is not going to break the system? Now, as far as the slowdown, let me just, with the following caveat. If you own two or three pieces of property, four, you know, infill lots, as they call them, and you want to invest, build a couple of houses on spec, or do duplex, that's what Palm Coast is about. That's what the original master plan was, primarily that type of housing. And there's plenty of builders here that'll do that for you. But when you get, when you start talking 50, 100, 600, 1,000 units, wiping out acres and acres of flora, which causes flooding. They said, "Well, we got to," especially, I digress, on Seminole Woods Parkway, they're clearing land like crazy there, and they've got more developments coming. And I mentioned somewhere along the way about flooding. "Oh, no, 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 it's under control. No flooding." And then, I think it was last year, the year before, we had a major rainstorm, and they had to close Seminole Woods Parkway for two days, because it flooded. So, I guess they don't have it under control, do they?
No, they don't have it under control.
So, these things have to be addressed. And, you know, it's not all about making money. Now, like, as you said earlier, I'm a capitalist, all right? I like to make money. I like to see people make money. But once it gets to the point where you're making money, is infringing upon the rights and the quality of life of the citizenry in Palm Coast, that's where your right to make money ends.
Yeah.
All right, so we have to keep that under control, and put that into perspective.
And the, to me, one of the issues that they overlook quite often is quality of life, not quantity of life.
That's true.
You know, and you see it all the time. And there's a gentleman in town, he hasn't given me permission to use his name, so I won't, but he advocated, and still advocates, for Florida Park Drive. And when I was running, I agreed with him 100%, and I suggested that we put in speed humps, not bumps, but humps, like they have in Town Center, so that it would naturally slow. I was, from the bench, ridiculed, you know, over, I get ridiculed quite a bit, anyway, but, from the bench, I was ridiculed for it. And now, they're trying to do it. So, let me ask you, on the flooding issue, this sort of, kind of leads into it. So, we have these infill lots, that they're now building-
High bills.
High bills, you know, one, two, three, even four feet higher than their neighbors, which of course causes the flooding to the existing homes.
Happened to me.
Happened to you, too. So, the city has pretty much turned their back on the people that are being flooded because of this issue, because it was, of course, the city that allowed the ordinances, or allowed the increased height. The people have been told they can go get filled dirt and fix their yard, but they have to sign a paper that says that they can never make a claim. What's your whole stance on all of that?
Well, I think that the only real solution, and getting topsoil, and trying to do it yourself, load it in a, if you're a 75-year-old woman, you know, and you don't have a pickup, what are you going to put the dirt in the trunk of your car?
Yeah.
The only solution to these high bills is a French drain, or a curtain drain, as we call them, up north. That does the only solution.
On whose nickel?
On the builder's nickel. Because, you know, they're going by the ordinance, or the zoning, that for some reason, and that was before I was on the city council, so I didn't have a chance to study it much, they okayed this business about being higher. And somebody said, "It's because the insurance companies wanted it, so that they could lower their cost of payouts, because it would be less flooding, because the houses would be higher. And the houses next to it, and back of it, are bedded." So, if you're a builder, you know that if you build a house, or you fill a lot, two feet, three feet higher, in my case, it's about a foot and a half to two feet higher, it's, the water's going to run off, it's got to go somewhere. And, oh, they say, "Oh, no, it'll drain into the street." No. Water flows downhill, you know, it don't go sideways.
Right.
So, they, the builders know this, and they should say that, "We'll put in a curtain drain, so that our property that we're building won't flood, and neither will yours." And they can do it for a lot less at the time. It's just like putting electrical outlets and wiring a house. When you do it when it's under construction, it's cheaper and it's easier. The same thing with a curtain drain. If there's nothing there, you make your two or three-foot-deep trench, and you put your pipe in, or your gravel, however you want to construct it, and you cover it over, and that nine out of 10 times will solve the problem. That's what should be done. And they should be held accountable for that.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, when I first moved to Palm Coast, 40, almost 43 years ago-
He beat.
My dad was a builder, not a developer. He was a single-family, single-home builder. And the rules back then were that the slab of the home, the monolithic concrete slab, which is the base of every home in Palm Coast, needed to be one foot above the crown of the road. And everybody was that way. So, nobody flooded the neighbor. Everybody was the same. Now, you know, we have the swale system, and it may not be the best system in the world. It was the least expensive system that ITT could be, could put in at the time. But if everybody was at the same height, and everybody was sloping the same way, you could maintain the swale system, and you could maintain the flow. Now, back then, we actually had to have a survey on the swale itself, to make sure that it was sloped in the right direction, to run it off to the drainage. The thought pattern changed somewhere along the line, and the city now says, "Oh, no, they're not for, to flow water away, they're to allow it to percolate." What they, you know, if you've ever been a contractor in Palm Coast, and built a house, and dug the slab footer holes, you'll realize that about two feet down is clay. Nothing goes through clay. You can't rely on percolating through. They screwed this whole thing up, and it's going to be difficult to fix it. But I'm glad that you're willing to stand up and be that way.
I am. And just to take that, not to belabor the point, but one step further, because my, I live in a cul-de-sac, and during heavy rains, it floods. I have lakefront property. You know, I'm going to put up a sign, "No fishing," in front of my house. But the problem, as I see it, lies not so much in the swales, but they are a problem, and they have to be properly pitched, is in the drainage ditches at the end. Because when they get clogged, it's like a funnel. You have a big opening on top, and you have a small opening on the bottom. And when that small opening either gets clogged, or the volume becomes too much from the top, it's going to overflow. And that's what's happening. The swale, the drainage ditch at the end of my street, which I'm, almost the last house, hasn't been attended to in five years. They just don't, they're not attending to it. And that's what, they're in lives the problem. Because the water can't go anywhere.
Well, I know that under a couple of administrations ago, they reduced the amount of swale teams that were going out to, you know, revamp and clean out the swales. So, in order to get back to the proper number to take care of everything, of course, that's going to be an expense, to hire people, bring in new equipment, now that the old equipment is probably gone. Where do you stand on that? I don't see any other way of doing it, so sometimes you have to spend money. But what's your opinion?
Well, sometimes you have to bite the bullet.
Yeah.
But there's also another alternative. There are, I'm sure, that we have a canal system, and not only for saltwater canals up in the C-section, but for drainage. I'm sure that there's companies out there that will, and are capable of doing the swales, maintaining the drainage ditches, so that they eventually lead into the canals, and the canals go to the ocean eventually, and maintain it. Now, when you, when you, I'd have to look into the pricing, but off the top of my head, it seems to be more practical and cost-effective, because you're not paying the social security, you're not paying workman's comp, you're not paying health insurance-
Pension.
You're not buying equipment, you're not contributing to a pension plan, you're contract for X amount of dollars to do this job, and to maintain these swales. And then you have somebody to go to, but that absolves, or negates, the ability to say, "Oh, we don't have the manpower." Well, then, if you don't have the manpower, that's an option. Frankly, I think that there's a lot of money to be saved here in Palm Coast, in respect to municipal services. I think that, I think we should be utilizing the process of attrition. As people retire, move, die, get promoted, if they're, if they're not, their position is nonessential, or not critical, don't backfill it.
Yeah.
The other thing is that we should look into consolidation of services. And so, insofar as if you have four or five supervisors supervising a bunch of people in wastewater, stormwater, and all of this, well, let's combine the, these groups, cut down the amount of supervisors, you don't have to fire anybody, but here again, attrition will come into play. Look at, as I said, with the swales outsourcing, and cut down on the amount of employees that we have, because in any organization, the biggest cost is personnel, public or private. And so, we should be looking at ways of cutting costs in that area. Attrition is a good way to do it. Nobody loses their job, nobody's fired.
Well, we're, our city budget is- Well, we're, our, our city budget is quickly coming up to a half a billion dollars. Probably will be next year if things keep going the way they're going and that number just staggers my mind.
Yeah.
For the size of the city that we have.
Yeah. Well, I, I didn't get an opportunity to vote no on it because I was in the hospital. But, um, I, I, I think we, we really got to do a lot of, I think we have too many, too many tiers of upper management. Um, I hear that they just hired a new city manager, which was, it's about time. Um, so let's see, uh, what kind of cost-saving measures he can come up with. But I think that, that's the name of the game. We, we got to cut back on costs, we got to cut back on this, this humongous, uh, development. And, and you know, basically, it's really all about, if you, if you, if you really scrape away the top surface here, it's all about the west side, uh, development. A, a major sports arena, uh, I don't know, three, four thousand units of housing on the west side of Route One. That's what, that's what all of this is about. This is what the big developers who, you know who they are, remain nameless, uh, is this is what, this is what they're shooting for. And same thing in, in Town Center, Town Center. Um, there won't, there won't be any green space left there anymore.
One of, one of the interesting things, you brought up the, uh, this, this coliseum they want to build.
Yeah, coliseum.
Uh, under the former administration with Mayor Alvin, he stated that, uh, it would be a big draw for people for sporting events and so forth and that those that are going to large sporting events down Miami, Fort Lauderdale could stop here on the way. And I commented, and I still have the same belief, that those going to Miami and Fort Lauderdale are about 30,000 feet above our head in an airplane and I don't know how they're going to stop here. I, I, I don't see the value in building a giant sports complex and they should be putting the concentration on, on finding ways to fix our infrastructure, if you ask me.
That's right. Uh, highway system, sewer, water, et cetera. Studies reveal that actually major sports arenas, unless they're located in a populated area, do not really draw people. Uh, because people drive there and then they leave.
Right.
Uh, if you have, there's no walk-in trade unless you're like Yankee Stadium and you're on 165th Street, 163rd Street, you have a lot of businesses around and people are, are come to the game and then they'll go to a restaurant here and this and that. But that's not the case. And here again, once again, that whole concept is short-sighted. Bennell just gave approval to build 6,000 units in Hee Hall or something, I think. Um, where do you think those people are going to go shopping? Palatka? Nah. They're going to come down Route 100, they're going to come down Palm Coast Parkway, it's already clogged up, to go to Publix, to go to the, the restaurants that are there. And it's going to be a worse nightmare than it is now. And it's, and they can't see this? I, I don't know. Somebody is making money somewhere, somehow, and that's why this is being perpetuated.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the things I'd like to see, um, and you know, maybe you can study it more when you get in and see if it's feasible at all, but you know, if you go to Europe, and I don't like comparing us to other places, but there's a working system. If you go to Europe, you'll find that on, on the corners in neighborhoods, you'll find a bakery and, and a little grocery store and things like that. Obviously, we can't do that in the existing neighborhoods that we have. But one of the things that does is it creates what I call a spider web. And, and you know, traffic moves outwards into different directions for stores instead of inward to a central spot like we have over on 100 now, which is causing massive, uh, uh, traffic. So I would like to see stores, not in neighborhoods, but in areas that aren't yet developed, but will be soon, having stores around the city. You have a doctor's, you know, you don't have one doctor complex near the hospital where everybody then goes there and across the street is, is a giant big box store where everybody goes there and that you can't go anywhere.
Right.
I'd like to see the stores and the bakeries and the, and the mom and pop shops, which our country was built on, spread out around so that we can spider web traffic outward instead of concentrating it inward.
Right. In other words, it, it, spread it out so that it's not centralized and like you said, everybody's going to, uh, Miller's or they're going to the BJ's or they're going to Tractor Supply. And, and you know, that, you mentioned a hospital, that provide, that's, that's another part of traffic facilitation. You have a hospital there and at two o'clock in the afternoon during the week, when the schools get out and people are going shopping, you can't get a, an ambulance to that hospital unless they ride up on the medium because there's, there's no place for the traffic to get out of the way.
Right.
And that, that, that causes a problem. That's a safety issue. I, I don't know what's wrong with these people, why, why they just keep moving full speed ahead with all of this major development instead of saying, wait a minute, like you said, let's take a break here, let's take a look and let's build up the, the, the manholes, for example, that just come to my, come to mind, are leaking. They, they have pipes that go into manhole go, but holes go down around eight to 10 feet and they have these rubber grommets for drainage to seal the water so it goes in the manhole, not elsewhere. And if they leak, then the, then the manhole is not efficient and they have to be repaired. They have to be maintained. The same thing with the pipes. Same, it's, that's where the focus should be. Because without a decent infrastructure, you're not really going to attract any kind of significant business here. Um, the only type of industry that I'd, I'd like to see is light industry. I think I talked about that last election. Uh, we got, I don't know, four hospitals, a couple of nursing homes, assisted living facilities. I think, uh, uh, a light industry or a company that manufactures medical equipment, uh, would be a good fit for Palm Coast. Or computers, uh, that, you know, make computer parts, keyboards, uh.
Yeah.
Whatever, the internal workings of a computer, I'm not that knowledgeable of, but key, uh, circuitry, uh, things of that nature that doesn't, that don't put a, they don't put a, 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 a major drain on the infrastructure. And you know, the more employees you have, you have to get them in and out.
Yeah.
Uh, and if you can't move your employees, then you're not going to locate here.
Right. Right.
Uh, so I, it is, it's a big spiral and going down, 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 down.
Well, we're just about out of time, so any last word?
Well, I, uh, I, I hope to get back on the city council because like I said, I've been here a long time. My daughter went through the public school system here. Uh, she is now, she went to University of Florida and she's now in law school in New York City. And, um, my wife is a nurse, she works for, uh, Advent Health. Uh, so we, we, we have roots in this community, we're, we're, we're committed here. And, uh, I'd like to do what I can to do my part.
Sure.
To, to improve it, especially the quality of life for all of the people here. And as you said, and I'm going to use that, not the quantity of life.
If you feel free to use it.
Thank you.
Well, Ray, I, I really appreciate you coming in. You, as I said in the beginning, the door is always open for you to come in and any other candidate that's running for an office, if you want to come in and try to get your word out, the door is open for you too. So take your time, think about where you want to stand on the various issues, come on in and we'll discuss it. There's no gotcha questions, we just want to get your word out. Thank you again, Ray, and you're welcome back anytime.
You're quite welcome and thank you.